To call the meeting to order. The first order of business is, the town clerk will read the posting of the warrant.
To within warrant, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Sunderland by posting up attested copies of the same at the town office building, the Sunderland Public Library, and the Sunderland Post Office, seven days at least before the date hereof, as within directed. Frederick A. Laurinaitis, April 10th, 2018.
Thank you. Warrant's been posted, so we have a valid meeting. And like we have in the past several years, I'd ask you to stand and cite the Pledge of Allegiance to begin the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce the folks for the meeting tonight. My name is Bob Doobie, and I'm the moderator, and my function is to keep the meeting running and orderly. To my right is Wendy Hool, the town clerk. Wendy plays the most important role of the folks up here, because regardless of what we do or say, whatever she writes down is what's valid.
I've never let 'em down here.
To her right, the Board of Selectmen, First Tom Fidenkevitz, Scott Bergeron, and David Pierce. To their right is Sherri Patch, our town administrator. And the board and Sherri do an outstanding job in terms of getting this warrant together. If you want an education in terms of what it takes to put the town warrant together, start going to the select board meetings sometime early January, and follow the process through, and see what it takes to put the warrant together. To the rear, stays out of focus, is the town council, Dave Jenkins. And he's here to make sure that when we have questions in terms of proper order or legality, that we can come up with the proper answers. Folks from the school administration, Lynn Carey, the superintendent of Frontier and the elementary school is here. Pat Kavanaugh, who is the director of business services, the number person. Ben Barszewski, who is the principal of the elementary school. Darius Modesto, Frontier Regional Principal. Rick Martin, the superintendent of the Franklin County Technical School. So you may ask why we have a contingent of school board members here. Like all towns in the Commonwealth, the majority of our budgets have to do with schools, so it's appropriate that these folks attend the meetings. A very overlooked committee in town is the Finance Committee. And the Finance Committee is responsible for developing the budget, and they present the budget to the select board, and the two boards hash it out into what finally makes the warrant that you have in front of you tonight. The Chair of the Board is Elliot Crowe, and I would ask him to introduce the members of his board.
To my left are Bruce Bennett in the middle, Bill Powers just to my left, and Sean Randall on the end.
Thank you. Before we start the meeting, one order of business would be, well, two orders actually. One, since you have copies of the warrant, I would request that we have a motion to dispense with the readings of the motions as each one comes to the floor.
Motion.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Passes unanimously. And the second one is that if we require, if a two-thirds vote is required on an article, I would like to, the regulations basically say that if there is any opposition at all, if there's one person that votes, then you have to take a tally in terms of counting the actual votes. And what I would ask is that a motion be made to dispense with that, so that if we have a voice vote, and there's a clear majority, when I say clear majority, one or two people may be voting negative, that we can call it passing unanimously. And the function of this is just to save some time in terms of counting when the outcome is going to be obvious. Now, if at any time you folks decide that what I call for a vote is incorrect, any seven members on the floor can request a recount of that vote. So by voting this dispensation in, we're not taking away any rights, but all we're doing is trying to expedite the meeting. So is there a motion?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Motion's made and seconded.
I just wanted to say that I agree with what you said, except for if there are a hundred percent of voices that we say nearly unanimous, it's a seven unanimous, if there are negative votes, then it's not unanimous.
We declare a majority.
Could you hear me? Hello? Could you hear me? So what I'm saying is if there are a few unanimous votes, that we call it nearly unanimous, because that's respecting the people who do not agree.
No.
You declare a majority.
What's that?
You declare a majority.
This is.
By the law, might I just say that it passes by a two-thirds majority.
We used to pass that by law in 1999.
It's a good start.
Yes. You have to use those words.
Okay. We have clarification. Rather than, if there is a negative vote, rather than declare it unanimous, we will declare it passes by a two-thirds majority.
Thank you.
The last order of business, oh, excuse me. We need to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Thank you. Last order of business before we get down to the business of the meeting is, we'll need some tellers, and I would ask, thank you. We need some tellers, and I would ask Deb Bennett, Rick Bennett, Vincent Grandanico, and Liz Sillen to come forward to get sworn in. And we thank you for your help. If you wish to speak, please use a microphone. There will be two microphones on the floor, one on either side of the room, so if you wish to speak, use the microphone, because if you've been to town meetings in this room, you know the acoustics are not very good. So we would appreciate it if you would use the microphones. Okay. Are we all set?
Yes, sir.
All right. Article one.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to hold for a second. We have something to say.
On behalf of the town and everybody here, we'd like to...
I'd like to present you an award to you, Bob, for all of your years of service on behalf of the town and everybody up here. On behalf of your many years of service, Bob, I'd like, we'd like to present you an award for all the years that you've been here and kept us in order, and hopefully that'll still go on tonight. So...
It had to be big enough.
You want to read that?
Read the dedication.
The first Sunderland commemorative coin for you there, Bob.
I'm just going to take a moment to read this for you. I'm going to just briefly read the dedication. Each year, we have an opportunity to recognize an individual or group who has contributed their expertise, talents, and/or passions to the betterment of our community. Many groups or individuals have been recognized over the years having served our town in ways that make Sunderland great. This year, we would like to dedicate our annual report to Bob Doobie. Bob has been known by many over the years through a variety of capacities, probably more recently through his leadership as the town moderator at our annual and special town meetings, an elected position he's held since 1990. How many of us have been up here since then? While 27 years is a very long time to be committed to any town position, that hasn't stopped Bob. He's also served for 23 years as an elected member of the planning board. He participated on the temporary building committee, the town center committee, the
Hell of a way to start a meeting.
agricultural land preservation committee, and he was on the executive secretary study committee. His longtime service demonstrates his passion for our town and the various contributions
Oh, you have to sing, too.
he offers to make Sunderland better as a group.
Sorry. We didn't tell you.
Well, I'd like to thank everyone, and what makes town meeting, town meeting, is
We have appreciated the immeasurable dedication Bob has contributed, and we wish to thank
the effort put into it by all the boards and committees, and as important, the efforts
him for his service and leadership.
that made by you folks coming out to vote on the articles. So it's a joint venture here, and it's, the success of it is due to all of our efforts. So, thank you.
Mr. Moderator, just so everybody knows, typically when we dedicate the, we dedicate the annual report, we, the chairman of the board, the Board of Selectmen will take it and actually visit the home of the person that we dedicate, usually a few days before the annual town meeting. Typically, the moderator, the moderator has the annual town report in advance, so he has an opportunity to go through it. I guess, I would hope most people would understand, Bob didn't have a copy of the annual report. But at this time, we also have something that we dedicate every year, also, it's known as the Spirit of Sunderland. And we started that a number of years ago, so Bob didn't have an opportunity to look and read the book yet, but at this time, we'd like to announce that the Spirit of Sunderland has been awarded to a husband and wife that have served their community since they moved here, actually, probably before they moved here, before they retired. So at this time, I'd like to announce that the Spirit of Sunderland this year is awarded to Linda and Richard Lopotka. At the same time, we have a section in our annual report in memoriam. And what we started a number of years ago is a remembrance page of residents that have passed away and had been instrumental in helping our town move forward. They served on committees and boards. This year, we have six members of our community. The first is Sally Aldrich. The second is Thomas Herrick. The third is Carolyn Conley. Fourth is Helen Pomeroy. Fifth is Cindy Alice Fleming. And Judith Thrisham. So if we could just take a moment and remember those that have been so instrumental in maintaining our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Okay. Article one.
Motion.
I'll second the motion to move Article one.
Okay. All of the reports are in the town report, which can be found in a hard copy as well as online. All those in favor of accepting the reports, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, declare it unanimous. Article two.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move Article two.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. This article sets the salaries for elected folks in town. Any discussion on this? Okay. Hearing none? All those in favor of Article two, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Declare it unanimous. Article three.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move Article three.
Second.
Okay. Motion's made and seconded for Article three. And Article three is basically the town budget. Now, do you want Elliot to, okay. Elliot Crowe, the chairman of the Finance Committee, is going to discuss some of the drivers that are responsible for the budget.
Good evening, and thank you all very much again for coming out tonight. It's always a tough year when we come up with a shortfall. We've worked really hard, but we are working in seven major areas that are the largest changes to the budget, and we have, we have overall a really good picture, and we've worked very hard to do the absolute most with your dollar that we possibly can. So the first major drive, if you look at the detailed spreadsheet, is that we have a big increase in technology expenses. This is due to the fact that we are hiring a part-time consultant who's going to be able to help us with occasional technology issues. And it's also, we're going to be paying for off-site backup of all of our town data. This is, because we're in the 21st century, everyone knows in news articles that technology is really powerful force in today's world, and we can't afford to leave all of our data in one place at the same time. Most people, I'm sure, have heard of what happened in Atlanta. If it can happen to a big city, it can happen to a small town. So it's just common sense to be able to keep all your eggs, not all in the same basket. So we're paying to have off-site storage, and that is going to be an increase in our technology budget from last year. The telecom expenses, there's some numbers that are going to be going up and down, but last year, we revisited our PEG access, that's the television access, and so now we have to officially appropriate the money. So the money was in the budget last year, and it was just in a different spot, that we didn't have to technically approve it in the budget for. And now, because we have to approve it coming out of the PEG access fund, it's $53,000 that appears as this giant amount, but it's actually, it's coming from a fund that we already authorized, that we already have the money, it's not new money. And it was already an expense last year, so it's not a new expense. The third one is our town buildings. There's an increase in the wastewater treatment plant, but we have a great deal of reduction in our expenses that are going to be coming from our solar generation that we have by the elementary school, and we have a new field that's going to be opening up soon. We also are implementing streetlights, complete replacement with LED streetlights, and that's going to reduce our town budget for electricity by about $6,000 a year, which is going to be pretty nice. Another large item on our budget is the South County Emergency Management Systems. So a few years ago, we went in with, we cooperated with the towns of Whately and Deerfield and several other towns in the region to consolidate emergency response services, emergency medical services, and our costs for that are slightly up because we are helping to support our share of a new building. But they're opening just in a few weeks, and we've got, we've had, the care since we switched over to South County Emergency Medical Service has been an increase in the quality of care that we get. We now have 24 hours a day, seven day a week paramedic response, which is an increase from what we used to have several years ago. And we've already proven this has saved lives in our town from people that were able to get full paramedic response that might not have had something before. So it is an increase of about 2.5%, but it is, it's going to have the highest quality medical response that we can get. Schools, as always, are a large part of the budget. We have, the increase to the town is going to be, it's coming every year. The biggest increase in terms of the school expenses tends to come from insurance costs, and because that ties into our other main issue that we've transferred from Hampshire County, Hampshire Trust Insurance Provider to Massachusetts, we call it MIA, it's a Massachusetts insurance, I always forget the article, the acronym name, Massachusetts International Insurance Association, or MIA, that allows us not only to keep the exact same services that we were receiving from Hampshire Trust, but we also were able to save $9,000 in our budget, but also increase the town's contribution from 55 to 60% for all in-town employees, which was very important for us because we know that as far as our regional area, our town employees work really hard, and 55% is, it's pretty low, if you look at the areas around us in terms of the healthcare contribution. And so we really wanted to be able to give back to our town. In addition, a lot of people might ask why we would have just switched from Hampshire. It wasn't just a random switch. Hampshire Trust was actually going to be having several major increases that wouldn't have affected the town's cost as much, but the cost for all of the employees, all the town employees, several main items for what they would have had for some of their insurance, co-pays, emergency room visits, and medications, were going to go up by large amounts. Emergency room visits were going to go from $0 to $500 per visit. Medication costs for our town employees were going to go from $10 to $60 for prescription. And those add up. Those add up for a town employee who, granted, is not taking his or her job to get wealthy, and having an increase like that, if you have three or four prescriptions, that jumps from being $30 or $40 to $240, and that's a huge difference. So being able to switch to MIA is a big deal for us to help our town, and it allows us not only to save money, $9,000 in the town, but also to increase our town's contribution. The final major increase is in the budget for the wastewater treatment plant. This increase is only due on their budget specifically as a line item, because we are offsetting the electricity cost to provide that people who do not use the wastewater treatment of the town, people who don't use the town sewer, was moved so that people who don't use the town sewer are not going to be having, to be responsible for maintenance of the wastewater treatment building. So that's an increase on that item, but it's actually being deducted in electricity costs in other places. Thank you. Those are the main drivers.
Thank you. Okay. Traditionally, what we've done, since you all have a copy of the budget in front of you, we go down through the major headings, and I'll ask if there's any discussion, and if you want to discuss that, we'll put a hold on it until we could reach the bottom, and then we'll go back and we'll discuss each one of the items that you folks have put a hold on. Okay? So, under general government, the budget is going to increase $81,777, or 19.6% this No discussion?
Hold.
Hold. Town buildings are going up, or decreasing, rather, $42,528, or a decrease of 19.9%. Wish my house would do that. Any discussion on that? Police department, budget is increasing $29,003, or 6.6%. Fire department, increasing $37,998, or 15.4%. Total inspectors and other protection, $1,417, an increase...
Thank you, those are the main drivers.
Thank you. Traditionally, what we've done, since you all have a copy of the budget in front of you, we go down through the major headings and I'll ask if there's any discussion. And if you want to discuss that, we'll put a hold on it until we could reach the bottom. And then we'll go back and we'll discuss each one of the items that you folks have put a hold on. Okay? So, under general government, the budget is going to increase $81,777 or 19.6% this No discussion?
Hold.
Town buildings are going up, or decreasing rather, $42,528 or a decrease of 19.9%. Wish my house would do that. Any discussion on that? Police department, budget is increasing $29,003 or 6.6%. Fire department, increasing $37,998 or 15.4%. Total inspectors and other protection, $1,417 or an increase of 3.7%. Highway, increased $19,311 or 7.1% increase. Okay, total health and sanitation, decreasing $1,044, a decrease of 4.3%. Library, increase $5,406 or 4%. Elementary school budget, increased 1,000, excuse me, $114,494 or 4.6%. No discussion. Franklin County Technical School assessment, increased $69,550 or 68.6%. Total frontier school assessment, increased $65,452 or 3.8%. Out-of-district tuition and transportation, increased $450 or 1%. Total benefits and insurance, increased $90,184 or 12.7%. Okay, hold. Total miscellaneouses and reserve funds, decreased $264 or 0.2%. The total operating budget is $7,445,879, an increase of $291,199 or 6.8%. Wastewater treatment, the budget increased $35,435 or 10.5%. Total debt and interest, decreased $7,673 or 3.4%. So, our grand total for the budget is $8,40,537, an increase of $498,968 or 6.6%. That's our total budget. Okay, now, we'll go back to the hold items. Somebody requested a hold on total general government that was increasing $81,777 or 19.6%.
Mr. Moderator, if I could, I wanted to point out in the general government category that you see here, there are two-
Can you hear him out there?
How's the volume? All right, got it. We'll do it this way. I wanted to point out in that $81,777 increase under general government, there are two primary drivers in that. The first is, this is the first year we have had to appropriate in the budget the FCAT expense for a decade that has been contractual, has been passed through, meaning the revenues that are, that come in from Comcast for our PEG access license feeds straight through. That's a $53,000 plus increase of this $81,000. And the second piece of that driver, now again, it's important to bear in mind with respect to the FCAT, and if this gets too deep in the weeds, tell me to stop. The appropriating function being town meeting is an accounting change for this pass-through. These revenues are not on the tax rate, they're part of the PEG access license fee. The state has asked for this to be accounted for with an appropriation, so you're going to see an input on our revenue stream and now an expense. So, $53,000 is something that this is the first time we've been voting on in town meeting, but it's not necessarily anything new. FCAT's been doing great work for us for a decade. The second piece of this is that $13,000 additional for technology, and that's technology support. There was, there's always opportunity for improving the efficiencies in, inside of, you know, general government and business as well. We have had for a number of years a dedicated and quite frankly, thrifty approach from one person with a lot of support inside of the building. We had a DLS, assessment of the town's infrastructure, and this is one of the outputs of that. This is an annual service, you're going to see this in future years. But this backs up, not in the techie side, this backs up the capital expense that we've appropriated over the last two years for technology upgrades at the town office building, public safety complex, this year the library, anyway. So, those are the other drivers. If those two items were simply removed, the total government increase would be $17,960 scattered throughout all those other lines that make up general government. And I wanted to just take the opportunity to point that out.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion on that item? In terms of the technology, I'll digress a minute. I went to a grandparents' day, day at a school today, and we heard a talk from a person in the technology department. And there was two interesting statistics that she presented. One is that there was a survey taken of high school students, and the question was whether or not they thought that they knew more than their parents did. Guess what the percentage of students thought that they knew more than their parents was?
101%.
It was 100%. And the other one was, I don't use Facebook, so I'm not really sure what it is, but they were talking about Facebook and my wife is on Facebook. And the question was, how many students use Facebook now? Students don't use Facebook anymore. 5% of the students use Facebook, and the reason is their parents use it. So, they use something else. So, in terms of technology, if the budget goes up in technology, I think it must be a good investment because that's where the future lies, it's in the technology. Okay. Any other discussions? Okay. The next hold was all the way down to Franklin County Tech School. There was a hold on that.
I just wondered what the expenses for a 7% increase-
The question is, what was the increase due to, since it's such a large increase?
Rick Martin, Superintendent of Franklin County Technical School. The increase, we went from six students to 10 students. And over the, on page four of your FY budget worksheet, it articulates a 10-year trend. And you'll notice from 2010 to 2014, there was an average of $230,000 assessed to the town of Sunderland for Franklin County Tech. And in the last five years, we averaged $132,000. It's gone down because the enrollment overall has gone down. But over the last several years, we had only six students. This next year, we have 10. So, it's $17,000 per student, that's where you would have the increase from.
Are you saying there's only 10 tech students from Sunderland?
That's correct. It used to be a lot higher.
But they all go.
Well, the enrollment has declined significantly across the entire county.
I didn't hear that answer, please.
The enrollment has declined significantly across the entire county.
Anything else on that line item? Okay. Total benefits and insurance had a hold on it.
Dylan Corpita, South Main Street. My question was just, balance of that account is and what that money is invested in.
With this, it'll be right around $80,000. I think it's $55,000 now, and then with the $32 transfer, it'll be in the 80s. It's about $55,000 right now, and so with this $32,000 transfer, it'll be up in the 80s.
Were you going to follow up to it? What was that? Your follow-up was who did it?
What is that invested in or what type of accounts is it sitting out?
The Bartholomew Group.
Yeah, if you want, you want to swing in, talk to treasurer collector or us at a, we just, this year contracted with the Bartholomew Group to be the fund manager. So, the town's not doing it specifically, but we have a fund manager. The catalyst for driving that was frankly, you know, the amount of time required to pay attention to those kinds of funds in this body's public interest.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right. Wastewater treatment plant budget had a hold on it.
I just wanted to clarify, you said that the expenses of taking care of some things for wastewater treatment were not being charged to folks with personal water, I mean, septic systems? And that the reason, I just wanted to be clear, did you say that the reason was because the solar electric savings was going to be used to credit? I was just trying to figure out where the savings to the folks with private sewer was going to, do you see what I mean?
Yeah, if I could, so the global answer is all revenues to the waste treatment plant are paid by the users. And when the original schedule for the distribution of this electricity that we generate out here, there was a, part of that was incorporated in the treatment, wastewater treatment plant, it's been removed.
Oh, I see.
And so, that's, that's why you see the increase. And the logic behind that was that the town assumed this debt and this relationship with this leaseback. And it's not necessarily in our best interest to have the whole town pay for the waste treatments, energy offset. So, that came out, that's why you see an increase.
Okay, thank you.
And those of us who are not on the sewer system, if we have our septic tanks pumped, we help pay for the operation of the plant through our, I don't know what I want to call them, tipping fees?
Dumping fees.
Dumping fees. So, everybody pays. Any other questions on that? Okay. Total debt and interest, have a hold on that.
I had a question, actually a request. Would it be possible, I guess, for next year to have a schedule of projected debt payments by, you know, library, public safety, whatever it is? Because when we have some of these large items, it'd be helpful to know, all right, in two years, we're going to have room to do something. And that would be super helpful to me.
Great point.
It is posted on the backboard there, if you want to take a look.
It's also on the detail, the detailed budget's also on the website, Dylan. And if I could piggyback on that, Mr. Moderator, two big pieces of debt are coming off in 2020. The debt schedule for both the public safety complex and the library come off the rate in two budget cycles.
Okay. Any other discussion on the budget?
If I could, Mr. Moderator, it's important to bear in mind that this motion, as is read, and I appreciate the dialogue around the detail on the expense side, the motion also includes a litany of accounts that these expenses are paid for. And this year, one of those lines is that this budget you're voting on is contingent on the passing of a proposition two and a half override for $200,000. If you look at your handout, everybody has one that looks like town of Sunderland, estimated revenues appropriated, et cetera, et cetera. You've got down the bottom right, there's a red number with a minus in front of it. And that's the 198,088 the budget currently has a structural deficit in. So, I would encourage, I would encourage participants, people to take a look at the budget, what it means to them, the services that they use and are passionate about, and ask to get out next week and vote. There is a two and a half override that's on the ballot. There are actually two, one of them is for operating, the other is about a fire truck. If you take our budget this year, our commitment to education in general has an increase of $249,946 of this, of this 498 that you see. And the remaining elements of growth in the budget are $249,022. So, if the, if the override passes next year, that means an additional $200,000 are raised on the tax rate. There's a sheet again out there what that means, I think it's 53 cents or $114 for the average home. And that goes strictly to the operating budget, that's a revenue stream that continues forward. If it does not pass, we get to come back here again and vote of the budget with either a reduction. And in those reductions, those pains we have, we have gone through in years past, 2009 specifically, or finding additional revenues. And we have slowly but surely over a decade or so, kind of pulled the revenues so they're realistic, they're not really kind of out of the norm. So, the combination of revenues and reductions will simply be the required formula. If the budget does not, if the override does not pass, essentially it falls in two categories. It falls in operations or general government and the elementary school. And I say that because the Frontier Regional, the Franklin County Tech, the SEMS, they're all district assessments. So, they come to us by formula, other participants pass it, it passes. So, we have to pay those, the debt we have to pay. So, we're looking in those two categories for any reductions. So, I implore people to get out next week and vote. I think $200,000 override is important to support the budget. And it was Francis, who's on the finance committee for a number of years, said that, you know, your operating budget is your town's statement of its health and its goals. And if you vote this budget, I would hope that you all show up next week and vote for this override as well. Thank you.
Peter?
That was election hearing.
Is this working? Okay, thank you. My name is Peter Gagaran, I live on North Main Street. I want to follow on with some general comments about the budget and, which will somewhat echo what Scott just said. I have, my background in the town and doing things for the town includes a stint on the finance committee and chair of the finance committee back a long time ago in the 1990s when we faced actually some, many of the same issues we face these days. You have a lot of things you need to be able to do for a town, and you have very limited revenues to get them done, and so you're forced to run as tight a ship as you can. Back then, and this was 20-plus years ago, that I was sitting up there where Elliot is now, we ran a tight ship. That's still going on. I retired not long ago and I was always interested when I was on the finance committee in the elementary school, because the elementary school is the largest share of the town's budget. And as chair of the finance committee, I actually went to a lot of school committee meetings for the elementary school because I thought it was important that there be good understanding in both directions of what's going on in the town. Understanding- Understanding from the people running the town and running the finances in the town, what's going on at the school, understanding of the people in the school, what's going on in the town. And we each offered, we each had our set of problems to solve and often working together, we could do a better job of solving them. I retired a couple of years ago and I'm at the age where I had both time and still just enough energy to still feel like it was possible to do something more for the town. My wife and I don't have any kids, therefore we also don't have any grandkids, but it struck me that that was no impediment to actually being on the committee that interested me most, which was the school committee. So there was a vacancy on the school committee last December and I put my name forward. Funny enough, nobody else did, because it's not all that appealing. And so presto, I was on the school committee. I don't have a background in education, I don't, I haven't raised kids, I don't know all of the issues that go along with that. But we have four of the members of the school committee that know a lot about that. Okay, I have a background in finance, a background in trying to efficiently manage stuff, trying to use money the best way possible. Okay, so I thought you can add something to the committee. My particular goals were, harking back to many years ago when I was on the finance committee, was number one, to have better communication between the school and the rest of town and the selectmen in particular. I just thought that's a, that's a win-win situation when you do that. It just absolutely makes sense, but, you know, people get in their own turf and it can be resisted in cases where it may not make any sense, but that's just, you know, we're human and these things happen. Okay? The second thing I was interested in was actually, you know, what's important that goes on at this building is what we do with the kids, but you need to take care of the building too. And I don't think there's a school or an educational institute, any place, that doesn't deal with the problem of deferred maintenance. Because when you run short of money like you always do, the first, the easiest thing to say, okay, we're going to put off fixing the problems in the building for another year. And you put it off for a year and you put it off for another year and then pretty soon you got big problems. Okay, so I wanted to give a voice to, we got to take care of this stuff before it gets to be really big problems. Okay? And then the third thing I wanted to do was to just have my own view of how the school is doing. We spend a lot of money, that's the biggest piece of the budget, on this school. And so it was both, can we make sure we manage that as well as possible, but also, what are we getting for? And to have sort of an outside view of it from somebody that has, I don't have the vested interest of having a kid or a grandkid in the school, I will freely admit to having the vested interest of being a member of this town. Okay, a member of this town that feels it's important to have a school that you can be proud of. So that was my sense of why I wanted to be on the committee. Okay. What's my, I've only been on it for four months, okay? And I would report to you these observations that I, that I think are relevant to this whole budget discussions. The first one is in terms of the communication. I have already been to probably, I don't know, eight selectmen's meetings, okay? Just sitting there because who knows what comes up? And the number of times that something already has come up that is an issue where them hearing the input from the school is important and/or the school hearing what the selectmen are thinking about is important. And so after all of those meetings, I get back to the school administration and my school committee and I say, by the way, here's what happened last night. Okay, we ought to know about this, because, you know, we can make things happen together here in places that's already happening, okay, that I think is, you know, it's absolutely what we should be doing and what you as town citizens should want us to be doing. Okay? I've noticed at these selectman meetings that in the years that I've been away from like the real running of the town, boy, a lot of good things have happened. Boy, we have an incredibly good board of selectmen. Boy, we've got a good town administrator. Okay, these are things you read in the local newspapers, the Greenville paper, about things happening in other towns where they don't have the skills that we do in the leadership of this town. Okay, we are fortunate that we have got good leadership. And you look at the, I look at the things that have happened over the last decade, you know, in the way of running this town well, running it efficiently, getting the best bang for your dollar, okay, and I walk away saying, boy, are we lucky. And I think that needs to be said, because selectmen hear complaints very easily. Okay, they need to hear them more often when they're doing something right, because that needs reinforcement too. Okay? Taking care of the building. Part of what's in our budget for next year, okay, just in the regular part of the budget, is an extra fifteen thousand for just building maintenance. It's not enough, okay, but it's going in the right direction. Okay, in addition, there will be an article, we'll be talking about in a little bit, about capital projects for the town as a whole. This year for the first time, we've got a couple of projects in there that help deal with problems at this school. Okay? It's not enough, there are going to be more, but it's going in the right direction. So that's good stuff and we ought to be eager to support that. Okay? And then, I guess the last question is, as I said, I want to get on here to see what I thought about the school, how it's doing and how the place is being run. And that's been, well, let me say, I come here, I've come here several times, I've walked around, I've, I've just observed, this is an amazing school. They take little kids of all shapes and sizes, okay, of all abilities and disabilities, and they do wonderful things with them. Principal Ben, okay, is wonderful, his staff is wonderful. Okay? It really needs saying, because this is a great school. We also do it on the cheap. Okay, the cost per student here is just over thirteen thousand dollars. Okay, it's the, of the four towns in our district, us, Rayleigh, Conway, Deerfield, okay, it's by far the lowest number. And yet people will say, we've got bigger challenges because of our, you know, our demographics. What we actually have is a wonderful diversity in our population in the schools. And the school and Ben and all his staff, and that's the teachers and all the aides who don't get paid nearly what they should, okay, do a wonderful job with all these kids. Okay? And so we, we need to recognize that too. And so when I look at the budgets that we're presenting, it's a lot of money, okay, but it's, boy, it's money well spent. And when you look at it, we're still, we're doing stuff on the cheap. And so I will now get back to where Scott made his explanation of the overall state of the town finances. And that is that this budget, when you read the motion, it is contingent upon an override next Saturday, an override is an election, next Saturday, the town election. And the amount is two hundred thousand. That actually, this town has a history of override that more often failed than passed, they don't happen very often. This is the smallest one we've ever had, because again, the selectmen have been trying to keep it to the least amount that they needed to ask for. But this amount is needed. Okay, I've never hesitated over the years to disagree with mending money on something when I didn't think it was worth it. This one I do not disagree with, this one is worth it. Okay? I plan to vote for it, my wife will vote for it. I ask that those of you who are able to, okay, please vote for it too. And that means coming to the poll next Saturday to actually vote, it's open from eight to three. So I hope you will do that, because otherwise we would back here and we will have some painful, difficult decisions to make. Thank you for taking your time.
Thank you for your insights, Peter. Any other discussion?
Some of you might know me. My name is Guillermo Cuellar, I've been in Sunderland for thirty-nine years, married to my wife, Dale. Most of my career, I spent as a therapist or as an organizational consultant doing work in diversity, in corporate America and in many, many companies around the world. So I didn't spend much time in Sunderland. But for the last, I don't know, ten years, I've been in the school council at the Sunderland Elementary School. I know Ben well. Last time I saw Ben, I said, sorry, I cannot be in the school anymore, the school council anymore, because of health reasons. So I've been stage four cancer for the last five years, but I'm here. And that's thanks to my education, thanks to the fact that I'm able to manage systems, doctors and folks that were giving me help. So for me, education is what keeps me alive today. The fact of what I learned when I was a kid, thanks to my father and the schools that he put me in and the choices he made to support schools. So for me, to reinforce the importance of education, especially in an era of fake news, so to speak, where folks need to continue a battle of understanding what is the real data, what is the value of education, any diminishing of education at this point on the town of Sunderland. Because we have put a lot of energy, it's a beautiful school, there's art everywhere in the corridors, there is beautiful places, the kids' education that they're receiving right now in Sunderland is A-plus. We're very fortunate, not only for the government that we have, I rarely come to say anything about you guys, because I watch on television, but I am so proud of all of you, because the work we have done over the years is exquisite. The school also needs our support. One of my friends says, well, I don't have any kids. So, and I'm supportive of education. So people say, well, if you're old and I'm retired, I don't want my taxes to go up. Well, the reality is that probably my taxes will go up for about a hundred dollars a year. Is it worth it for me not to do the movies a couple of times or to a party? Probably so, because I believe in the future. So I just want to say that about my commitment to education and especially my commitment to Sunderland. So thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? All right. Call the question then. All those in favor of Article Three in terms of supporting the town budget, including the phrase two hundred thousand dollars outside the limits imposed by Proposition Two and a Half, which is going to require a vote next Saturday as well. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Declare unanimous. Article Four.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move Article Four, please.
I'll second.
The motion's made and seconded to move free cash to the stabilization fund.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to modify Article Four. Amend, excuse me. Article Four. Change the value from fifty-three thousand four twenty-eight to zero.
To zero?
To zero. And if I could, Mr. Moderator, at the selectmen's meetings, as the budget is being developed, our use of cash sheets showed that we were going to leave a historically low number of free cash moving forward. Does everybody have a balance of use of various accounts, was one of the handouts? The motion, as it was created, and you'll see that there's a zero-three vote for the, from the Board of Selectmen, and a zero-four from the Finance Committee, we have a little over, a little less than a decade ago, created a formula for the use of free cash. So it's formulaic, not necessarily subjective to any particular year, any particular pressure. This is the first year we want to deviate from that formula. We started the year, as you see, with stabilization with five hundred and sixty-two thousand three hundred and forty-seven dollars, and we're not asking this warrant or this body to expend any monies from that. Our original budget, using the formulas that we had, was only going to leave, moving forward, in free cash, a little less than seventy-five thousand dollars. The feeling of the board was that, and the feeling of the financial team, that's the accountant, treasurer collector, a member of the Board of Selectmen and the town administrator, was that historically, in the last three years anyway, we have had a baseline of between two hundred and forty and two hundred and seventy thousand dollars of free cash, and that seventy-five thousand dollars was simply too little. So if this body chooses to accept the amendment, we would keep in free cash this value of fifty-three thousand four twenty-eight. And that would help us move toward a more historically average area of free cash moving forward. It's important to bear in mind, free cash, once it's certified, is a whole series of inputs and outputs of unexpended funds, reimbursements from programs, reimbursements from the state. But the town leaving a little bit of its existing revenues moving forward is the baseline for that free cash. Our goal in this use of, balance of various accounts sheets is to leave about two hundred thousand dollars in free cash moving forward. And are those sound, those numbers, after the impassioned dialogue from our last article, sound ominously close? But if we come into a town meeting with zero free cash certified or a negative number, that puts us in a really difficult situation. So that's the reason for the amendment, and thank you for the time.
Thank you.
We need a second on the amendment.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to reduce the transfer of free cash to the stabilization account from fifty-three thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars to zero. Any discussion on that? Stuart?
Sorry. Just curious, what the difference is between this amendment and just voting no on the original motion?
Absolutely identical outcome, as I was just having the conversation with.
Any interesting?
It's hard, it's hard to explain, please vote against this. Versus amending it to a value and having the explanation. So I really do appreciate it, we had some consternation ourselves about, do we simply pass it over? By simply passing it over, we didn't, we may have had, missed an opportunity to have dialogue about what free cash is, how free cash is generated, why we need some to move forward, and that's why we chose to approach it this way. But thanks so much.
He's coming.
He really is a runner, isn't he?
In that case, did you deviate from any other formulaic uses of free cash or just this one?
We reduced the move to capital stabilization on the next article. But no other, no other, these two changes to essentially would be allocated reserves were the only ones. No other changes.
Thank you.
Another great question. And the goal is after this town meeting election cycle, when we get, when we get past, you know, it's all, it's all fun and games until you get to town meeting. And so when we get to after-town meeting, we can actually start thinking about, does the formula have to actually be looked at again? A couple of pieces of the formula for the use of free cash that were, when it was created, we did not allocate OPEB, which we do now, out of free cash, a percentage. And we also didn't have a capital stabilization fund, I'm sorry, and fund and funding source. And those two things have created some tension on what that free cash distribution actually looks like. So we're going to revisit that going into May-June.
Just as a point of information for you folks, Stuart Beckley, who was just asking the questions, is the town administrator for the town of where. So I think he's trying to pick our brains. So I think he's trying to pick our brains and how well we function. Any other discussion on the amendment? Okay. All those in favor of the amendment to reduce the number to zero, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Declare unanimous. Are we ready to vote on the article now? We voted on the amendment, now we have to vote the article itself. All those in favor of Article IV as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Declare unanimous. Article V.
I'd like to move Article V, Mr. Moderator.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. You guys want to explain it?
This, this is actually the move of free cash and reduce value, as I was just saying with Stuart's question, to fund capital stabilization. This originally was going to be almost $162,000, and we, we looked at the actual capital planning committee, looked at the capital requests, and we're going to vote a capital budget here in a couple of articles, and the number of items that were requested were reduced for a variety of reasons. So this value here and the value that's on the rate fund the capital plan for this current
Perhaps you should explain what a capital stabilization versus regular stabilization?
Yeah, actually, if I could, Mr. Moderator. So a couple of years ago, this body, and thank you for doing it, adopted the statute for the creation of a capital stabilization fund. General stabilization, which we have, is used usually to offset debt for borrowing or in the event of some mid-year crisis we have to deal with. We have stabilization for that. Capital stabilization is, is another statute that's adopted, and it is a narrower use of those funds. There's a very distinct definition about what those funds can be used for, and they have to deal with buildings, rolling stock, some debt authorization for equipment that is a lifecycle over 10 years and over $10,000. But the reason for appropriating into capital stabilization this value, funding the capital budget and not leaving a lot of money in capital stabilization this year, is that that narrow value, if something happens in September, we have to come back for a special town meeting, the broader view, the broader use of stabilization funds, the board felt was more important to protect. So that's what we're doing with this.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. All those in favor of Article V, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Declare unanimous. Article VI.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move Article VI.
Second.
A motion's made and seconded. Move $29,000 in free cash to the PEG access fund account.
If I could, Mr. Moderator, last year, we, we, this article is here as a correction of the appropriation for FCAT for last year. Bless their souls, we underappropriated based on a quarterly, a quarterly estimate, and we needed to do this annualized, which we just talked about in the budget process. Bless their souls, they've let us ride for 29 grand for the last half of the year. So this is our half of the year that we have to pay FCAT for this current year.
So we have to pay it?
Well, we don't have to if we want the cameras to stay on. Again, this is, this is part of the step where, for a decade, PEG access funds came to town and through a contract went to FCAT. We had our annual town meeting last year. We had some residual money left over from the prior year, from the prior year PEG access funds, and we did not appropriate to FCAT. This year, we appropriated in its entirety to FCAT, that $53,000.
Any questions? All right. All those in favor of Article VI, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Declare unanimous. Article VII.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move Article Number Seven, please.
Second.
A motion's been made and seconded. Move money from capital stabilization and sewer reserve fund.
What you have in front of you is a handout for the FY19 capital budget with its funding by sources. Original, the original requests that came to the capital planning committee were for a value of 325, just about $325,000. Each year, the departments, it's important to bear in mind, there's the town and then there's the waste of treatment plant, sewer reserve pays for the treatment plant. I want to give a shout out to the folks who manage our treatment plant for us because they're the catalyst in many ways for how good capital can be employed. You know, we don't think about it that often. There's not a lot of downtime that's allowed at a waste order treatment plant. So you have to have assets that run all the time, they have to be reliable, they have to be robust. That said, they also have to be maintained and they have to be projected forward. So their, their model is, is one that Tom and David and I have talked about at length as we were going through the capital plan. So anyway, capital from department requests are sent to the capital planning committee through the budget process, they're vetted through the capital planning committee, capital planning committee recommends to the Board of Selectmen, the budget in this case here, you can look at the list here, it looks like we have a truck lease that we're going to pay, thank goodness. We're having the second part of a fuel dispensing system replaced at the highway garage, and the third item for the highway, for the highway department is a F-250 pickup truck with a plow. All these come into a big binder, they come to the capital planning committee. There are some things on here that departments have submitted for that are not on, you don't have in front of you because they didn't, they didn't either meet the definition of capital or they were not listed as high or very high in a priority. But it's important with capital planning that you're seeing a three and five and 10 and, or soon, a 10, a 20-year capital plan being developed for our building assets. But anyway, the library is looking for building envelope repairs as well as HVAC replacement and repairs. The police department, again, these are two building pieces, security system on the inside and then access to the building. The, our group, the administration, is looking for $65,000 for your last piece for the North Main Street Engineering to give us a 25%. There's some discussion about, is the current engineer going to do that work for us? Are we getting a new one? That's active after this meeting. We have the telephone upgrade as well as some IT work that's happening at the town office building, including servers, backup servers, redundant power supplies, et cetera, for some robustness in support of the operating budget, where we just appropriated, we hope, for $13,000 for continued maintenance on that. Rec, rec department came to us and asked about renovation of the fields, both in this space as well as at the, at the town office building, the space behind the town office building. Some of that value that was sent forward was actually part of annual maintenance, and so that money was moved out. And the request in front of you is to do that, renovate, reseed, do soil survey, soil sampling to see what makes sense over there. And the last two are for this building, hot water system. If anybody wants to take a look behind this wall, there's a big old clunky boiler about the size of a small submarine that, that shouldn't be here making hot water. Originally maybe, but it's, it's long since passed its life and it was oversized to start with. And then the security camera system in this space, as we all know, and it's an unfortunate state of affairs, we have to have more secure schools, and the administration came forward with a security camera requests that will end up being building-wide, and I, we're assured that the platform is across the district as well, like parks. And then the sewer, waste of our treatment plant system has, first biggest nut is going to be an infiltration study. That's a state requirement for a 10-year, a 10-year plan, and it's got to be revisited, see how much infiltration we get in the system, and then two pieces of equipment. And I love the last one, remove, rebuild, reinstall per. It's actually a pump, but it says per, and it just sounds better. So these, these, the capital request appropriated is 23503448, and the definition for these are extending the life of an asset greater more than 10 years or more than $10,000. So you see some of these are smaller than, I'll use the library as one group. I look at that as one itemized list of taking care of the building. So do they meet the intent of the capital planning? Yes, they absolutely do. It's a multimillion-dollar asset, and we're going to spend $14,000 to continue extending its life. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
And I would say, if I could, one more thing, and then I promise this will be it for capital. It's only the second year.
[inaudible]
So this is the second year we've actually had a funded programmatic capital plan, and when I'm finally done on this board, this body, and sitting down in your chairs, I'm going to be really, really thankful for the body's actions to make a capital plan be funded. So, thank you.
Any questions? All those in favor of Article VII, capital budget, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Declare unanimous. Article VIII.
Move Article VIII, Mr. Moderator.
Second.
A motion's made and seconded for Article VIII, which is to appropriate $536,868,000 for a new fire truck.
That guy.
Okay, we need a microphone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'll keep it brief. What I've put forward to everybody is the culmination of about three years of work from the truck committee, the fire department, and several interested vendors. And what we did is we met with about six manufacturers, again, over the course of a couple of years, identified features that would work for us, identified what was in the market, and ultimately came up with a specification. We bid it last year, was decided not to put it onto the warrant for town meeting. We bid it again this past year. The price went up significantly with the competitive bids, so it was decided to put it on the ballot. And I realize this isn't the end-all-be-all for the project, but I wanted to come up, see if anybody had questions, concerns, any conversation that we could have this evening.
Sorry, maybe you could just shed some light, just talk a little bit more specifically to the condition of our current equipment and why the average person would feel safer and better if we made this decision and bought this truck?
Gladly. What we're replacing is a 1988 model fire truck. The town purchased it new. It was an okay truck for us. Had some initial problems, had more problems as time has gone on. And ultimately, what it boils down to is technology's gotten better, the vehicle's gotten less reliable, and another item that some towns don't have to deal with is we can't fit all of our firefighters that respond to the station into the trucks that we have to roll. So the truck that we're requesting will seat two more firefighters safely. And I could get into other items, such as all the rules, regulations, and all that stuff that you would expect to change over three, 30 years. And when it all, when it all rolls in, we've got that part of it. We've also got the fact that we have houses being built in more, more, I'll say, remote parts of town. It's not a big town, but there are places that are harder to get to, not necessarily in terms of, on the town roads, but driveways are quite long. We've had some fires where the trucks can't get up to the house. Makes it a little bit more difficult to operate, a lot more dangerous. This all-wheel-drive truck would give us that ability. And also, when you look at the proposed vehicle and the original vehicle, and also our current frontline truck, there isn't much difference between them. We're not really reinventing the wheel in terms of what we use now and what we're requesting. Anything else?
What happens with the old equipment if we get a new truck?
Well, the old equipment will be sold off. The current value estimated is a few thousand dollars. Nobody will take it in trade, it's that old. So what we'll have to do is auction it.
I think it's a good idea, especially as prices keep going up, but being Chair of the Conservation Commission, it's a pretty good bet that Sugar Bush will be built during the early life of this new truck. So does it have the capacity to meet the needs there for that, that, those units and the stories that they're proposing to build for it?
No, it does not. Because in order to adequately defend that property, we'd be looking at anywhere from a million to a million and a half dollars for a ladder truck or another truck with that aerial capability. And not only does that cost impact the cost of the vehicle, but maintenance would also have to impact the, the annual budget for the fire department. So having heard nothing from that group recently in the past year or so, that was not part of the consideration.
This is certainly a project that's been going on. As Chair of the Conservation Commission, I know we have a hearing Tuesday with regard to that project, and so, and, and it has to do with the wet delineation, but it sounds like that is gearing up again. So I guess it's something to be considered with regard to how likely it is to be built, but all I'm saying, we're seeing more activity, so it may be built. I don't, I don't know, but they're more active.
Well, that's good to know, but ultimately, we're, we're certainly talking about a completely different piece of equipment, considering that. And it's a, it's an excellent point, but at this point, we do have a need for what's being proposed. And I think everybody will agree, I'm a taxpayer too, if we're, we're looking at a truck that costs three times as much, it's going to be a different, a different ballgame. Well, you know, at that point, we get into discussing what the, what the proposals are for the units. It's my understanding, not to turn this into another conversation, but it's my understanding that those units did not conform to zoning, and they did not conform to the height restrictions that we have in town. So I suppose we could have a good long conversation about what our obligations are in terms of defending those properties and where we should put our capital and, and our money.
We're now part of this three-tan consortium, and I thought part of the idea was that we were going to save money because we could share some of this super expensive equipment. Can you just talk about that?
Sure. Well, the consortium is for EMS. It's a completely separate body from fire and police. But you do bring up a good point. We do have something called mutual aid, and we do quite often call neighboring towns in to help with equipment. One of the important things about mutual aid is that you have something to bring to the table. And right now, our second oldest truck is the one we want to replace, it's 30 years old. The next oldest truck, our frontline truck, is about 13 years old. So we've got this, this progressing inventory of equipment, and while, yes, there are people that can help us out, it's very common at a fire now, a structure fire, a house fire, to have five or six trucks. So nobody's really at the point yet where they can get by with one truck. We have multiple calls going on at the same time. Sometimes in the, in the southern part of the county, we'll have two or three fires. Hard to believe, but it happens. They always happen at the worst time. So, yes, we do have some help, but it's also important for us to keep our inventory current and keep our equipment modern.
I have a question. So you said that the truck was like really old from like back then in the 80s, and that it can't get up certain roads and streets. Is it the truck itself or is it the actual roads or 50/50?
Probably about 50/50, but there's only so much expectation you can put on a resident or homeowner for, for access to the property. And also, the truck itself. And also, the truck itself, it, you know, it's a vintage nineteen eighty-eight truck. And I say vintage because it, it hasn't had a lot of creature comforts added to it. In fact, it's had no creature comforts added to it. It's been maintained well, but its capabilities now are about the same as they were back then. So, now, if anybody here is driving a car from nineteen eighty-eight, you probably, you probably know what I mean in terms of the capabilities, but also just in general, how it operates, reliability, and so forth.
So, with the new truck, we would be able to have, you know, help more people in emergencies, and you could get to them faster and better, and there would not be like a major issue?
Well, what we've done is we've specified the truck to be all-wheel-drive along with an on-spot chain system. So, the chains actually drop down from the chassis, and they go under the tires. So, you've really specified the most capable vehicle that you can. It's going to carry a thousand gallons of water, so it's got some weight to it. The balance and the, and the design of the truck are good, so it will go up steep approaches, go down steep approaches, and be able to handle side hills pretty well. And one other item sort of ties into what was asked before. It will be one of the two all-wheel-drive pumper tankers in South County. So, right now, there's only one in a neighboring town. If we get this truck, there'll be two in the general area, so it'll be somewhat unique.
Mr. Moderator, if I may, please. Just to review with everyone, and I think it was mentioned earlier about the debt schedule and the principal schedule. Just so everyone knows, Scott had earlier said that the library, principal and interest, and also the public safety complex, principal and interest will be coming off in two years. The, the fire truck is at least a year-plus out. So, we won't actually be spending money for probably close to two years before we're actually asked to pay money. In that time, right now, in this year's budget, we're spending approximately a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars a, this year, on the public safety complex, principal interest, and seventy-six thousand, almost seventy-seven thousand dollars on the library. So, both of those, so, so basically, it's almost a hundred and eighty thousand dollars will be coming off our debt schedule in the next two years also. So, if you're looking at timing to incur debt, it may be a good time to incur debt for a major purchase like this. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
So, I, I've just, I'm Steve Schneider. I'm a member of the ZBAA, and maybe there are some other members here who could help answer this question better than I can, but in answer to Kurt's question about Sugar Bush, it was understood on the, on the forty-B application that the buildings were too tall for our equipment and that Amherst would have to come to aid for fires at that building. So, I don't think Sunderland is on the hook for getting equipment that could deal with a fire there necessarily.
Thank you.
How many bids did you get for the fire truck?
We got two bids.
Bruce, I'll defer to you. You had your hand up first.
I, I think it's a good idea that we have a discussion about the fire truck. I do have some concerns about it. It's a lot of money. With Sugar Bush, as was mentioned earlier in the agreement with Amherst, who knows where that's going to go? And maybe we should look at it a little bit more. And possibility, I, what I see in the future, and I know the discussions have taken place, is we have to start regionalizing some of the equipment with the other fire departments in the area. Because these, this equipment gets used very seldom, but it's important to have, and it's important to have the access. And with the, with the volunteers, and a lot of the volunteers working out of town, it's difficult to get people to respond at certain times during the day. And I, I think it's a good time to have this discussion, start the discussion, but maybe we need a bigger truck or a more expensive truck down the road in a couple of years, see what happens with Shigalove, and see if we can regionalize more with other towns. And that's...
My question is for Scott. Scott, if you could, I understand this is a debt exclusion. If you could just explain the difference between a debt exclusion and an override vote. We got two separate override votes, but they're not both the same.
That's a, it's a great, it's actually a very good point, Dana. As Tom was just mentioning, we borrow for a debt exclusion. So, it's clearly outside of the Proposition Two and a Half cap. That debt, that assessed value lands on the tax rate. At the end of that debt schedule, that tax rate drops based on the debt being retired. We have had in nineteen, in the last nine years, we've gone from over six-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand dollars of debt in FYO nine on, on the annual budget, to this year, two-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand-seven-eighty. Two years, another hundred and eighty thousand of that comes off. So, it comes right off of the rate. It's raised differently, it's raised in the same manner, but it's retired, whereas an override for the operating budget is a reset of the two and a half, and that stays year on year on year on year, unless it's, unless it's, you know, we can do an underwrite, but I doubt like hell that it ever happened. But Dana, that's a really good question. Again, when you buy something big and you borrow for it, if you go outside of your debt, if you go outside of your levy limit, you can do an exclusion, and a debt exclusion is just for the life of that debt cycle. So, as we talk about...
And what's the life of this debt cycle?
Well, this, we haven't talked with the finance team about the debt schedule yet because it's maybe a combination of some use of existing reserves. It may be who funds it and what size and what kind of term they fund it for. This article in front of you right here is for essentially the purchase price, and the debt pieces are going to be rolling up into this. So, it may not be exclusively debt. And it's a really good point. This is essentially the maximum of thirty years borrowing for something like this. It's like buying a building with wheels.
I'd also like to note, when you compare it to buying a building, that last year, the Town of Sunderland, our borrowing bond rate was increased to a double-A bond rating by Wall Street, which allows us to borrow at a much better rate than other towns who've defaulted on loans or, or things like that. We've been very responsible with our money. And if you look at the current trends for interest rates of what's going on with the Federal Reserve, that interest rates, it seems like interest rates currently are as low as they're going to be for some time. It seems the interest rates, as we know, have been at zero, the, the Federal Reserve rate has been at zero percent for several years, and it's finally starting to go back up into more reasonable numbers because the economy is doing better. And so, if we were going to make a borrowing for an item of this magnitude, it would seem to be, to be best to, to commit to that as early as possible so that we can get the best possible rate.
Thank you.
So, I'm in favor of the new truck, personally, let me say that. And I'm wondering, most of these kinds of pieces of equipment have an estimated useful life? What is the estimated useful life of the truck that's going to be retired, thirty years old?
Well, there's an estimated useful life, and then there's the useful life that the people that make the rules say. We're getting most of the useful life out of the current truck at thirty years, thirty, you get beyond that, you get a lot of problems with different components, and, and big things start to cause problems. The, the useful life of a fire truck, according to the NFPA, National Fire Protection Association, you can argue it a couple of years either way, but it's about fifteen years. I wouldn't say that's reasonable for a town like ours with the amount that the truck has produced. We do go on about a hundred and fifty fire calls a year, which surprises some people. So, we figure every couple of days, the trucks are going out. Sometimes it's three or four times in a day. Sometimes they sit for three or four days. But we're going to get a good, solid thirty years out of the new truck. The way that it's designed, it's going to, it's going to fit a purpose. And the truck that we have currently, the, the useful life is just about there. We've had some scares doing pump tests and different things. So, any more time, and we'll have to make the decision about putting a lot of money into an older asset or being in a lesser position to, to respond to mutual aid and help ourselves.
Anyone else? All right. Article Eight indicates that the money is going to be obtained by borrowing. Therefore, it's going to require a two-thirds vote. So, all those in favor of Article Eight to purchase a new fire truck and exclude it from the limitations of Proposition Two and a Half, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. I'll declare it a two-thirds majority. Thank you. Article Nine.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move Article Nine.
Second. The motion's made. Seconded. Move money from the CPA funds to funding a playground at the Sunderland Elementary School.
Can you hear me? Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And as the saying goes, when one door closes, another one opens. And starting Monday, Mr. Dubey will be doing morning announcements at the elementary school, so we appreciate his volunteering for that. On behalf of the Early Childhood Playground Committee here at Sunderland Elementary School, we are requesting twelve thousand dollars of CPA funds to go and act as seed funding for our playground project. The early childhood playground was last renovated in nineteen ninety-nine. Over the years, it has gotten great use, and on most summer days, for those driving by on one sixteen, you'll see children playing in the early childhood playground. It is now starting to show its age. It's the big main structure, causes a pretty significant splinter problem for our students. We've tried a number of different remedies to solve this issue that have not worked. Additionally, the safety surface needs to be replaced. Currently, we have peystone, and under the peystone, the ground is pretty hard, and when the peystone gets pushed away, it turns into concrete, which acts as a pretty unsafe surface for our students. The remaining portion of the playground project is going to be funded through grants and fundraising efforts, the first of which is taking place next Tuesday for Valley Gives Day. Any questions?
How old is this? How, how long have you been being used?
It was last renovated in nineteen ninety-nine.
How many students have gone through it? What is the, the tread in the tire, you know, it's a...
Sure. We have approximately sixty early childhood students each year.
Is anybody good at math?
Twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred, okay. And so, we'll expect this to last for another twenty years or so?
Absolutely.
Another twelve hundred kids, safer in this environment. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Gary.
Anyone else? All right. All those in favor of Article Nine, twelve thousand dollars to build a new child, early childhood playground here at the school?
Aye. Just to design.
What? Design. Design, excuse me. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. So, voted unanimously. Article Ten.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move Article Ten, please.
Second.
Mr. Moderator, I vote... No, I just want to correct wording. Nothing about the article. Someone else is going to talk about the article itself, but I believe the fund should be open space fund for the thirteen thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars portion, not the undesignated fund balance. That would make a different accounting complication for that, from that fund.
Open space?
The open space fund is the way we voted on it for the Community Preservation Committee. So, can I make an amendment to that wording?
You can do that. Put it in writing.
You can make an amendment, as long as you put it in writing and give it to Wendy.
Okay. Just write the whole thing over again with those words changed?
I'll help you.
Okay.
Okay, so we're, we're switching this, the source within the CPA funding mechanism. So, we're going from undesignated fund balance to the open space funds within the CPA account. I'm assuming everyone knows what the CPA account is. We all voted for it, and that's what you're surtaxed on, on your tax bill in town, if you have a house valued at... What's the cutoff point for CPA before you get surtaxed?
A hundred thousand.
No, it's more than that.
You mean, your first hundred, a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand is excluded.
First hundred?
The first hundred.
Okay. So, when you look at your tax bills, the first hundred thousand dollars on your tax bills is excluded. Everything above a hundred thousand dollars, you pay a surcharge on of three percent that goes into the Community Preservation Fund. And that's where these monies are coming from. And the monies that are in those account, or that account, can only be expended in certain ways, and this is one of them. Any questions on the amendment? CPA has a pool of money that's divided into different pockets according to statute. And what we're doing here is taking it, move it from one pool to another, because it better fits what they're trying to do with it. Okay. The first thing we have to do is vote on the amendment, which is to change the undesignated fund balance to the open space reserve balance. So, all we're doing is changing from one account to the other. We haven't spent, spent anything yet. Okay. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. So, voted for the amendment. Okay. Any discussion on the article as amended? Gary?
Good evening. My name's Gary Brier. I'm with the, the Community Pathways Group here in the Town of Sunderland. And I wanted to just give you a little bit of background on this, this article. You may have picked up in your packet a little description. Says Article Ten, matching funds for Sunderland's Riverwalk Project. This is about the fourth vote the town meeting has taken related to this program and this project over the last four years. Back in two thousand and fourteen, town meeting approved some planning monies from the CPA to begin this process. In two thousand and sixteen, town voted to approve acquisition of some lands that accommodated this project. And just last fall, town meeting approv, approved fund... And just last fall, town meeting approv, approved funding in anticipation of a two-hundred-thousand-dollar state grant, community park grant, to be able to move forward with this project. So I'm happy to report that we received that two-hundred-thousand-dollar funding from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And tonight, what we are looking to do is to match that with a little less than eighty-thousand dollars coming from the Community Preservation Act funds that Bob just explained. So the project, and we've got, there's got a little bit of a graphic on the back of the handout that we've provided, there's a map at the, or a plan at the back of the room. And we've had a number of different public forums and discussions to share the developing plans, really over the last two years or so. We've worked with the Veterans Committee, we've worked with the Ball Field Group, we've worked with a variety of other stakeholders and interest groups, the library, who all have proximity to the Ball Fields and this, this project. And really tried to work with each of them to recognize their, any concerns and interests, and really try to accommodate those and build the plan around them. So the plan at this point, and what we would be, begin working on probably late, either late this fall or beginning next spring, would be a riverway pathway that connects the boat launch with the Ball Fields. We would also be developing a circulation plan shown on that graphic that connects the Veterans Memorial, the library, the boat launch, the Riverwalk, and the Ball Fields, and tries to integrate those and accommodate handicap accessibility to all of those things. And it also provides a little pedestrian and bicycle access, as well as emergency vehicle access along the easterly side of the town office building. It would function much like the pathway here at the back of the elementary school functions, where it is not open to general vehicular traffic, but it's primarily a pedestrian and bicycle access and emergency vehicle access. So with that, unless there are specific questions, this vote is about approving the matching funds of a little less than eighty thousand from the Community Preservation Act Fund for this project, for which we've received two-hundred-thousand dollars from the state of Massachusetts.
Okay, thank you. Okay. In terms of what that area looks like, how many people in town can remember that that's where the wastewater treatment plant used to be? Now we have a library, we have athletic fields, and soon, hopefully to be a riverside park. So I would think that we're certainly improving the looks of that area. Okay.
I just wanna back that up, because Chris White, I live at 38th School Street, way at the end of School Street there. And it's just delightful to see the developments that are being made there. We're really excited. I mean, this is literally in my backyard, and my husband, my son, and I are really excited to, to see this project move forward.
Okay. All those in favor of Article ten as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Declare it unanimous. Article eleven.
Move Article eleven, Mr. Moderator.
Second.
Article eleven is pretty much a housekeeping article for the CPA every year in terms of putting money, or spending money in certain accounts and making sure that reserves exist where they're supposed to be and they have the correct balances. So it's pretty much a housekeeping item for the CPA. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor of Article eleven, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, declare it unanimous. Article twelve.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move Article twelve, please.
Is there a second to that?
A second.
Motion's made and seconded for Article twelve, to limit expenditure since the revolving funds related to the wiring inspector, plumbing inspector, board of health, library, community room, fire inspector, and highway shared equipment. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor of Article twelve, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Declare it unanimous. Article thirteen.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move Article thirteen.
Is there a second? Never mind.
You would miss one.
Tom moved the wrong article. Okay. Moving from capital stabilization to purchase a tractor for Frontier Regional School District. Any explanation on that?
Mr. Moderator, if I could, this is the town's share based on the district agreement formula for a piece of rolling equipment that Frontier has asked for, for a variety of uses in its yard. And as of right now, this is a budgeted value, so when I'm sure the purchase number comes in, we'll see what the final number is. I'm assuming we don't have a PO yet, right? Right. So this, this would be a maximum amount that's allowed by town meeting through the agreement.
Okay. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor of Article thirteen, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Oh, excuse me. I'll declare it unanimous, but it was supposed to be a two-thirds vote, so it is unanimous. Article fourteen.
Move Article fourteen, Mr. Moderator.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Move five thousand for free cash, conduct a classification and compensation study. For what reason?
This is part of a multi-pronged approach that the Personnel Committee, we've had a meeting over the last year or so. And essentially, when you look at all of the, the non-union employees in town, this is to address where we stand with that, because we've been falling behind in terms of our peer groups for our... Is that better? Fabulous. This is part of a multi-pronged approach that we've been doing with our Personnel Committee to review our competitiveness, so that we can essentially maintain and, and keep and be able to get employees. Because essentially, we've been looking at our, our pay, and we have been falling well behind our group in a number of positions. So we're trying to essentially get that up. And we also wanted to bring in some professionals to do another assessment, because periodically, we like to review that every so many years, and recheck our formulas, and make sure that we're maintaining our competitive status within the region. So it's, it's important, as a small town, to be able to do that, so. And this will fund that study. And then we may be looking at some additional recommendations based on when we see the results of that study, so.
So you'll have basis for recommendations when you lower all the salaries?
Yes, exactly, yes. But yeah, so hopefully this will provide us some, some good information, because it really takes a lot of work and effort to do a good study of this kind. And honestly, it would be short shrift to do this as volunteers. And so we'll be working with UMass and a number of other groups on that, so.
Any discussion? Lauren?
Hi, I'm Lauren Starr. I've been a library trustee for, I think, twenty-four years. And I cannot count the number of selectmen, finance committee, and personnel committee meetings I've been at to talk about staff salaries. We're talking about thirteen, approximately thirteen positions in town. These are all the non-union employees, non-elected, non-union. I'm perfectly in favor of doing this study, if we have a commitment that we are gonna take the data that turns up and act, and act on it. Otherwise, I'm not sure why, why we're doing it. I've seen studies, we've put, we've done analysis, we've, you know, we, I understand that we want to have good numbers to work with, and that's fantastic. But I think we need a commitment that then the study is gonna be the basis for moving forward towards salary equity for our employees.
I think I'm, I'm just supporting what Lauren said a little bit, which is that, are we doing a study just to make a point that we already know? It seems clear to everybody that we should, the thirteen people who, the non-union employees that are contributing to running our town are, I, I, there's not a person here, I would say there's not a person, yes or no voter, or on any side of the spectrum, who would, would say that the people who are giving that time are getting paid appropriately for it, I think, at this point. It's astounding to have a view, to a view of it. And I, there's a very, maybe it's a very old-fashioned notion, like, can we just take that five thousand bucks and spread it across those thirteen employees while we get this vote cleared up? Honestly, it's just hard to imagine spending money to make this point any clearer when it seems crystal clear.
Actually, in the budget you just voted, we did.
Yeah, that's...
The raises that were appropriated by this body.
Well, what we did, normally, we have a formula every year that we calculate out to come up with a COLA, and it would have normally been two percent. And one of the corrective measures is we actually increased that to three percent to help get us a jump on that, so.
Two percent is almost an insult in any other universe, but three percent is COLA standard for union employees. I think that to have it be commensurate with union employ, I mean, there's some, just some basic math, but I am just concerned that we're going through, at, at a time when we're, we're looking at budgets and talking about five hundred dollars and two hundred dollars and everything, you know, even spending money to make a point that I feel is very clear. But then again, I would not identify myself as, you know, just, I think maybe there are people who need this, this data to make that choice, but my, my gut tells me that it's, you know, we just need to get caught up, and we need to do it systematically over the next few years as quickly as possible.
That, that's essentially all part of the plan, and that's why everybody should show up next Saturday at the polls.
I mean, the other thing, I think, our, our, many employees in our town, at Personnel Committees, at Finance Committees, at Department, you know, people know when there's positions that aren't paid well, because we lose people, because the spots don't get filled, right? I, I feel like we have a lot of smart, organized, dedicated people running this town who can make this decision without spending five thousand dollars for some public policy wonks like me to do it out of Boston. I feel like, you know, like...
Sounds good to me.
I, we're not, they're not gonna do it any better than we do it ourselves. I mean, there are things that you need experts for, like, I don't know how, there's things we have to hire engineers for. This is not one of those things. We have really good professionals in this town who can tell us what our comparable towns are, and what people get paid, and who we're losing, and why we're losing them. And let's take that five thousand dollars, you know, even if we don't do it this year, I'd rather spend it ourselves and do, put it where we need it than send it to someone else.
My name is Susan Triolo, and I just, David, if you could tell us what the goal would be of this five thousand dollars? I mean, I heard you say you wanna, you know, figure out all the stuff that's been spoken about, but, you know, what would be the goal or hopeful outcome of spending that money?
It's essentially to get more information than just, here's where we stand against our other towns. We've got that information. But we want to make it more clear, and we also want to look at a more programmatic approach to this. And, and, and as if you've seen, in anything that we try to do here, we try to do in our programmatic approach. So we want to make sure that we're maintaining and not just tossing numbers out there, because we can look right now and see where we stand against other towns. But it's sort of a two-pronged approach. We can come up with all the numbers in the world. It's not up to everybody sitting at this table to vote, it's up to the town to do it. So that's, that's an important thing that we all have to consider. But essentially, we're trying to get more information than just simply where we stand with numbers against our peer towns, because it's not just about that. You have to look at total compensation and a whole number of other factors when you're looking at this information. And one of the other things that we did through the, through the Mayo's, we were able to increase by five percent the town's contribution to healthcare. So that was another thing that we tried to do, so.
Well, not to add to their work, but is there a reason the Finance Committee couldn't figure that out?
Well, you have the Finance Committee. And several years ago, the...
They could give them some of that money.
I, I believe it was the Personnel Committee is basically responsible for the wages and stuff. And they looked in, they did a comprehensive study of different towns, different employees, and, and came up with basically guidelines for what town employees should get, non-unionized town employees to pay. And it went before the Selectmen, and they didn't agree with what the Personnel Committee study said. As I look at this, the proposed work plan in this study that's presently before, is I believe to do a comprehensive survey, you have to look at the different job functions, the different responsibilities for the different people, because in different towns, they vary. For instance, you know, the, the Highway Superintendent, say in South Deerfield, he might be in charge of all the buildings. Where in Sunderland, that's not the case. So I think that you have to go in depth and look at each job, how many people they're responsible for, and that type of thing. I don't see anything in this study about it. And I, I think that the town should compensate their employees well. The unionized employees, every year, they get a raise, they get good raises, but the union, the non-union employees don't. And, and that's what I feel the issue is. And, you know, it's five thousand dollars, it's not much money, but as, as someone said, if we don't follow it and if we don't go into depth, it's a waste of money. And, and I think the study the Personnel Committee did a couple of years ago, who basically comes up with recommendations for raises, was good and was accurate, but it went no place.
I'd, I'd like to echo something that I think the Board hinted at, and I'd like to kind of state a bit more explicitly, that I think that on the Budget Committee and the Board of Selectmen, we work really hard, and we have a lot of really conflicting voices. I don't necessarily agree with a lot with one or two of the decisions, the hard decisions that have to get made. There are groups who I think deserve a great deal more investment than we can give them, but we have to fight very, very hard to be able to get our numbers within bounds. And even now, as you see, we still come up, we still end up coming up with numbers that require us to put an increase of taxes to the town. And when we try, when we work very hard to do that, and we have only two-hundred-and-forty-five people come out to vote, like we did last year, and an override, a budget that we propose that we try to address things, and it loses by fourteen votes, it's very difficult for us when we come on, come into a budget in a year like now, and we really want to be able to provide things, we want to be able to treat our workers well, we want to work very hard for this. But when the citizens of the town don't support that voice, it's very hard for us to, to make, to make these decisions. So I, I definitely want to say that we, we hear you and we feel your pain, and we want to help you as best we can. And it's just, there are some things because of, because of the laws, that we, we have to put this, you know, to the state of everybody, or to the voice of everybody.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay. Article 14, transfer $5,000 from free cash to conduct a classification and compensation study. Please say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Let's try it once more. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
I'm going to declare that it passes with a majority vote. Okay, article 15. I can't hear you.
She wants to do a standing count.
How many people want a standing vote? Keep your hands up. I got to have seven. Okay. All right. All those in favor, please rise. Tellers, come forward.
It's for the library.
Don't forget the table.
Okay, all those opposed, please rise. The results of the vote are as follows. Forty-four in favor, 32 opposed. The motion carries.
Just bring that enthusiasm next weekend.
Which article are we on? 14?
Sorry, this is a...
Move Articles 15, Mr. Moderator?
Article 15.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Pay $20,272 from free cash to fund our snow and ice removal deficit.
Is this combined material and labor?
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, this is one of the few categories outside of declaring an emergency we can deficit spend. And this year, we overs, the Highway Department not only performed yeoman's work in some really weird weather, but managed to stay just short of $20,272 outside of their budget.
Budget.
You also see as part of our general government increase, the, I'm sorry, part of the operating budget increase, a slow uptick over the past handful of years on both snow and ice materials, as well as snow and ice labor. And so, you know, based on the weather, we hope to keep these numbers low. It wasn't a decade ago, we were in the $100,000 range, so. Anyway, we have the revenues, and we should...
Are you sure it's going to be enough?
Yes, actually, this is certified.
Well, I know, but it's about the end of the fiscal year.
Well, it's the snow and the ice I hope are gone.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor of Article 15, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Declare it unanimous. Article 16.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move Article 16.
Second.
Okay, Article 16, $500 from free cash to maintain veteran's grave at the North Sunderland Cemetery.
Basically, Mr. Moderator, the, I think they're called the Committee of Three, or the Board of Three, came to the Board of Selectmen that governed the North Sunderland Cemetery, came to the Board of Selectmen and asked to dedicate some money, in this case, $500, to maintain veterans' graves in the North Sunderland Cemetery. So North Sunderland Cemetery is a private cemetery, but they do have veterans in there, and they're asking that the town support the maintaining of veterans' graves to the tune of $500.
Thank you. Any discussion?
So the question is, what does $500 buy? Is this a reoccurring, once we spend the 500, every year we're going to spend 500, every three years we're going to spend 500? What are we buying for $500?
Part of the, what we're asking that the Committee of Three, or Board of Three, does is that they itemize what they spend the money on to maintain the veterans' graves, Dana. We don't know, they didn't say what, it was going to be a long term, but this was something that used to be funded by the town back up to about 30 years ago, and the town stopped funding it. So they just asked that we try to restore some money to help with the maintaining of veterans' graves at that cemetery.
My name is Ken Kouchai.
I'm one of the members of the Committee of Three. Choose the line, Ken.
I'm Ken Kouchai. I'm a member of the Committee of Three, representing the North Sunderland Cemetery. A lot of those veterans, there's no remaining relatives left. We currently, I believe, it was, the last count was, I believe, there was 35 veterans' graves up there. And as of the fiscal bucket booklet in 1989, it was dropped, the town gave the, some North Sunderland Cemetery, $575 for veterans' grave care. And that means mowing and trimming and picking up the leaves in the fall and cleaning up in the springtime. And since 89, we have nothing from the town. And the state, if you look into the state law, mandates that the town support care of veterans' graves. And that's what we're going to do, is make sure these, we continue on, it was done years past by all volunteers, but lifestyles have changed so drastically, now we have to hire somebody to do the maintaining, because we're, everybody else is still busy. And that's what it's going for, is to help fight the cost of our maintaining that cemetery at the quality it is right now. So we appreciate very much, give it a lot of thought. These people gave you the life of this country, and some of this, a lot of them were town folks here. Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of Article 16, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Declare it unanimous. Article 17.
Move Article 17, Mr. Moderator?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. What are we trying to do?
Listen to those two guys.
My name is Aaron Falbel, and I am a member of the Sunderland Energy Committee, along with Laura Williams, another founding member of the committee, our chair, Scott Reed, and our newest members, Edward Gately and Carol Ryan. Warrant Article 17 seeks to authorize the Board of Selectmen to initiate a process towards something called municipal aggregation of electricity purchases. Let me briefly explain just what that means and why a town would want to do it. I'd like to direct your attention to the handout that has the Franklin Regional Council of Governments logo on it, says Article 17, which explains in writing more and more detail. To aggregate, the word aggregation means to bring the parts of something together into a whole. And here, we're talking about aggregating the electricity purchases of a town's residents and businesses into a whole. So municipal aggregation is the bulk purchase of electricity by a city or town, or perhaps several towns together, on behalf of its residents, businesses, and municipal customers. So municipal aggregation offers an alternative to the basic service, which is a default electricity supply provided by the local utility, in our case, EverySource, formerly known as Wamiko. So why do it? The reasons for and benefits of municipal aggregation are several. One, bulk purchasing can potentially provide a lower price for electricity on average than the basic service rate. And I'll come back to this point and explain why I use the qualifiers potentially and on average, because that's important. Two, aggregation can provide price stability over the term of the electricity purchase contract, which is typically two to three years. Now, Eversource adjusts their rates every six months. This makes adhering to an energy budget in any given year, to say nothing of several years, very difficult. So price stability is an important thing. And three, and most important, aggregation can provide a greater proportion of renewable energy, greener energy than that provided by basic service, thereby accelerating a shift from fossil fuels to clean energy. Now, by law, by the Renewable Portfolio Standard, Eversource has to include a certain amount of what's called Class 1 regionally generated clean energy in their electricity supply. So what you're buying today has about 13% renewable energy contained in it. And by law, that amount has to increase by 1% each year. But this small, step-by-baby-step increase is simply not enough to meet, or to sufficiently decarbonize our electricity supply to meet the standards set by the Global Warming Solutions Act of 2008. This was a law enacted by the Patrick Administration. Now, as indicated by the last sentence in the warrant article before you, no resident or business will be forced to adopt this arrangement. Let me say that again. No resident or business will be forced to adopt this arrangement. By law, municipal aggregation contracts come with an opt-out clause, which means that individual purchasers can simply opt out of this arrangement if they want to, stay with Eversource as their supplier if they so desire, or choose an entirely different supplier from the one that the town might select in its aggregation contract. Additionally, some communities have also offered what's called an opt-up clause, which allows residents or businesses to purchase an even greener component of renewable energy than the rate offered through the aggregation agreement. For example, the town of Greenfield has an opt-out arrangement where residents can choose to purchase 100% renewable energy. Now, I said before that this arrangement, this aggregation, can potentially offer a lower price on average. The fact of the matter is, I don't have a crystal ball, I can't predict whatever Source's rates will be into the future, but looking at the towns that have aggregated already, their price for energy, including a greater component of renewable energy, comes out to be lower than the Eversource rate. And Greenfield, which I just mentioned, purchases 100% renewable energy, their rate is about what Eversource charges now for 13% renewable energy. So again, this bulk purchasing power gives us more bang for the buck. So I want to also emphasize that only the supply portion of your electricity bill will be affected through aggregation. The transmission, distribution, and other fees will still be maintained by Eversource. You will still be an Eversource customer. You will still receive your bill from Eversource, they will still maintain the power lines. Only the supply line on your bill, which is usually about half of the total, will be affected. It's important to realize that the greater consumer demand there is for renewable energy through aggregation, the more renewable energy facilities will get built. Municipal aggregation is thus an important step in the transition to renewable energy resources and the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions linked to climate change. And that, in a nutshell, is why the Energy Committee here in town is in support of this measure. So this warrant article that's before you now will not guarantee that aggregation happens in Sunderland. It merely authorizes the Board of Selectmen to explore this option and move in this direction. If they like what they see, then they will sign on the dotted line. If they don't, they won't. A no vote on this article won't even give them this opportunity, it will deprive the town of the opportunity to have greater price stability, greener electricity, and potentially lower rates. It's a good idea, and it's good for the town. Thank you. I'd be happy to entertain any questions, and I, with the permission of the moderator, I'd like to ask Bob Armstrong, who's on the Select Board of the Town of Conway, who's done a lot of research on the question of municipal aggregation, and is also a selectman, to join me and answer any questions that I can't answer.
Oh, that's right.
So, like, if you guys have a photo of what I can say?
Moderator's discretion.
Moderator runs to me.
What's happening?
He's from Conway, he wants to let me talk.
Why do you want to talk? It's pushing 10 o'clock.
I don't need to talk. I'm comfortable with what questions you might get, so I might be able to have some answers. If you just gave your great job, I would have done better.
I'm not uncomfortable, I know, but he's done a lot of research, and I want to make use of his talent and his knowledge.
Two-part question. Is it accurate to say that in general, renewable energy is more expensive?
Yes. On average, renewable energy is more expensive. If you were to go just yourself to an alternative supplier and purchase more renewable energy, that cost would be higher, but through aggregation, through bulk purchases, and also through teaming up through other towns, it's not just Sunderland that's interested in doing this. Thirteen towns in the area, I can even tell you who they are, are interested in aggregating together. So this multi-town economy of scale will give you a lower price on renewable energy than you can get if you did it by yourself. So yes, it's more expensive, but the price can come down if lots of people do it at the same time.
And you mentioned, for example, in Greenfield, the opt-up option. How is the base proportion between renewable and non-renewable set?
That's really at the discretion of the Select Board. They are the ones who make the decision. We have just interviewed a, what's called an aggregator or aggregation consultant. Their name is Colonial Power Group. They've helped a number of towns in the area, notably Leverett, aggregate. That's all they do, that's their specialty. So there are advisors, they know about electricity prices, they know what's out there, they can recommend when we're getting a good deal and when we aren't. And so they can advise the Select Board, but it's also... But it's also important, I think, that residents, if they have strong opinions about renewable energy, or how much Sunderland should have in its mix, to communicate that to the Select Board, because they're the ones who are going to make the decision on the matter.
So, in reality, what this article is, is just an enabling article that allows the Selectmen to do it, and as an individual homeowner or business owner, you don't have to participate in the process.
That's correct, and you can opt out at any point in time, not just at the beginning. So if for some reason Eversource gets nervous that too many towns are aggregating, and they pull a Walmart maneuver and lower their prices to try to woo people back, you can go back to Eversource, and then later when they jack up the price again, you can go back to somebody else, and there's no fee for changing back and forth. Now, if you have already chosen a different energy supplier from Eversource right now, that's a different story, because you have to read the fine print in your contract. If you change to whatever Selectmen choose as an aggregator, you might have to pay a significant fee. So that's a different story. You're probably best off opting out until your contract is over with, with that, uh, service provider.
Call a question?
Mr. Moderator, if I could, please? What, one, the, the question is about you don't have to go into it is true, but you actually have to opt, you personally, your person has to opt out of the program. So right, so if Sunderland agrees to join the aggregate, every resident, business in Sunderland will be on the aggregate, and then you will have to opt out of that. I believe, I believe it's a very good program, I just have a problem with the opting out part. I think we should opt in, not opt out.
Yeah, unfortunately, that's part of the Massachusetts General Law, so we can't change that.
I understand, but I...
Yes, but there will be many ways of opting out, by postcard, by, um, online, there will be, uh, public education before any aggregation takes place to make sure people know what that means and how to opt out. So we're trying to make this as easy as possible for people.
Will.
Sunderland South Main Street, um, on the opt-in, opt-out business, um, you say that you can opt out at no cost. It's going to depend on the contract that ends, end up being made, you know? I've read a little bit about the aggregation, there's situations where people are opted in without knowing it, and when they want to opt out, there's actually penalties that's made. If we were to do this with, uh, other, uh, services that we all need to have, have to have, you know, like automobile insurance or health insurance, we could aggregate that and put that out to bid, would we really set it up so that you have to opt out? It's, it's not right to have a room with eighty people in it making a decision that's going to affect four thousand people, and, uh, they're not here, you know, they don't have to be here. Um, we get a lot of mail, stuff gets lost. If, if this is a good idea, and it may be, I think it's not going to be an effective idea on some counts, but if it does lower rates for people, that's great. But it should be an opt-in. I really object to the idea that people don't know what's going on and they get slammed, and then they, they, then they find out later on that they don't want to be in the program. I mean, it's not right. You shouldn't do it by an opt-in, it should be absolutely an opt-in. And I don't know why we can't amend the article to say that it's an opt-in.
That would be against the Massachusetts General Law that's, that handles aggregation. And it's not actually eighty people who'll be deciding, it's actually three people who'll be deciding, because it's the Select Board that actually makes the decision. All we're doing tonight is saying, should the Board of Selectmen go forward or not?
I'm concerned about the renewable energy itself. Does Sunderland required to be providing a certain amount of renewable energy in order to opt in to this program?
No.
Or, and do we know how the renewable energy is going to be created? Because I'm very concerned, especially in this very agricultural community, that we're going to have fields going over to, to solar panels instead of putting them on top of buildings or parking lots.
Right, but the renewable energy doesn't necessarily have to be generated in Sunderland. In fact, it probably will not be. We can't tell you where or how, what, or what form of the renewable energy is generated until we have a contractor, until we have a response to our bid for renewable energy. And that's where this consultant can help us, and, um, again...
But we're not required to have a certain amount ourselves.
Sorry?
But we are, as a town, not required to have a certain amount.
No.
Call a question?
Second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded to call a question. What that means is, we're going to limit debate if the question passes, okay? So what we're doing is voting to limit debate or not. All those in favor of limiting debate, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Declare the majority. Passes majority vote. Okay, thank you. Oh, excuse me, that's the call the question. Article 17. All those in favor of aggregating electricity, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
I'll declare the ayes have it by majority vote. Thank you. Article 18.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move Article 18, please.
Motion's made and seconded to take property on, or acquire property on 36 Garage Road.
Mr. Moderator, this is, this is a, uh, 216 square foot total area of a piece of property, uh, number 36 Garage Road, where a sidewalk is going to be rounding Garage Road, and there's two pieces, one, uh, we're asking for a permanent easement for 160 square feet in one section of that sidewalk, and another section of the sidewalk on the same property for, uh, basically trimming the corner for 76 square feet. We have, um, we have a friendly partner in this proposal, approved by the lenders, and the land, the landowners are, uh, amiable to it.
So the, the property is going to be acquired, how?
It's a permanent easement for a sidewalk.
Permanent easement.
Sidewalk.
Okay.
And again, it encompasses two areas. One, one area is a, is a, a small triangle of 176 square feet, um, 160 square feet total, and another small corner where the sidewalk rounds, it's a total of 76 square feet.
And this is all worked out with the landowner, everybody's had...
Everybody's signed off on this, and I want to thank the landowner for, uh, not just participating, but being, you know, excited about complete streets.
Okay. Any questions?
My name is Heidi Bauer-Klepp, I am the homeowner.
Thank you.
My husband Jason and I purchased that home in July of 2017, and when we considered buying the house, one of the things we found so attractive was the number of people we saw out and about. We loved the idea of being in a neighborhood where people were walking, so we happily support this.
Great. Thanks so much again for your help.
I live at 43 Garage Road, so I'm not sure where this is, so I'd like to hear more of an explanation of where 36 Garage Road is.
It's where the stakes are along Garage Road, isn't it?
Okay. Where, where, my house is 43, next to me is 47, and this way is 39. Across from my house is the triangle, so I'm not sure where you're talking about. The top part of the triangle?
It's where the stakes are out there along the side of the road.
If I knew where the stakes were, I wouldn't be asking.
If you want a map, we'd be glad to give you a map.
It'd be nice to know that this is happening in my neighborhood.
We have maps we can provide to you. And you get the opportunity, Susan, to meet your neighbor, she's right next to you. That's right.
All right, all in favor?
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, how long is the day?
No, great point, actually. Bids are out right now, RFQ is out right now, bids are being reviewed, and we anticipate construction would be complete before the summer's done.
And is that like, yeah, I live at 39, I live literally like five blocks straight, and it's, it's, it's a great idea, I fully support it, it's awesome, but it's like a dad crying never, like, super quiet. So this is going to be in the daytime, where we're all at work, and it's not much at night.
Correct. There'll be no night work on that. Large trucks with big floodlights, two in the morning. And music, too, sorry.
All right, quick, Mr. Doobie. All those in favor of Article 18, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Declare it unanimous.
Thank you.
Article 19.
Uh, move Article 19.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to Article 19.
About it?
Quick.
Uh, what you have...
Don't, don't read the article.
What you have before you is a non-binding resolution from the citizens of Sunderland. Um, calling on our state and federal government to pass anti-corruption reform. The focus of this effort is to make sure our legislators in Boston and Washington know that the influence big money has on our elections and our government is unacceptable. The resolution does not change any way that the town operates, um, it just says that we support the effort to get anti-corruption legislation passed. It's an effort that's being spearheaded by Represent Us Western Mass, which is a local volunteer group, um, and it's, uh, part of a national nonpartisan organization called Represent Us. To date, there's over twenty-five Massachusetts towns that have passed this resolution at their annual town meeting last year. This year, there's thirty towns across the state that are offering it at their town meetings. Across the countries, there's forty-one different chapters in different states, and new ones are starting every day. So a yes vote will help accelerate the nationwide movement for greater transparency, integrity, and responsiveness in government. We are building a movement to get a government that represents everyday people, not wealthy special interests. So there's summaries of this act in the back on the table. I'll answer any questions if I can.
Call a question? Okay, motion's made and seconded to call a question, it's non-rebatable, non-amendable, so we have to vote on it. All those in favor of calling the question, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Declare it passes unanimously. We have to limit debate, that's all we've done, we haven't voted on the article. All those in favor of Article 19, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Declare it by majority vote. Okay, Articles 20 through 25 are the so-called consent articles, which are basically housekeeping articles for the town. Allows various boards and treasurer, collector, to do their work. And we vote them 20 through 25 as a single vote. So if there's any questions on Articles 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, or 25, if there anything we want to discuss on these housekeeping articles...
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move, uh, consent articles, please.
Second.
I move the article.
Oh, thank you. Is there a second?
Already said. Second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded, any discussion on the consent articles? Okay, all those in favor of Articles 20 through 25, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Okay. We have one other item of business, two other items, actually. Wendy has to do the reading of the election warrant notifying us that there is an upcoming
You are hereby directed to warn the inhabitants of said Sunderland qualified to vote in the town elections to bring in and cast their votes for the following offices to be filled for the year 2018, and on the following questions. On Saturday, the 5th of May, 2018, at the Sunderland Elementary School at 1 Swampfield Drive, Sunderland, Mass, from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. The offices are moderator, selectman, assessor, board of health, Riverside Cemetery trustee, planning board, library trustees, and, and elementary school committee members. Question one, shall the town of Sunderland be allowed to assess an additional $200,000 in real estate and personal property taxes for the purposes of funding the operating budgets of the town and the public schools for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2018? And question two, shall the town of Sunderland be allowed to be exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2 and 1/2, so-called amounts required to pay for the bond issued in order to purchase and equip the new all-wheel-drive pumper tank, pumper tanker for fire, fire And again, Fred Laurenice, posted on April 10th, 2018.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We need one more motion.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion dissolve, please.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to dissolve the meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, thank you all for coming. And I'd like to thank all of the TV people for all of the work that they've done.